We dispensed with items number two and number three of our order of business today.
The motion by Councillor Cyril Radock, seconded by Councillor Apol Bakay.
Second.
To this and Council Rabago to dispense the said two items, any objection? Hearing none, the said two items are dispensed. Next item, Madam Secretary.
Call, sir.
Please go Dr. Alkol.
Yes, sir. The Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor, si Antonio Miguel W. Perez.
Present.
The Presiding Officer for temporary, Councillor Apolonia G. Bakay.
Present.
The Majority Floor Leader, Councillor Cyril B. Radock.
Present.
The Minority Floor Leader, Councillor Oscar A. Buling.
Present.
Councillor Carolyn D. Sison.
Present.
Councillor Michelle S. Segundera.
Present.
Councillor Jose Rito Fontelera.
Present.
Councillor Berna S. de Rabago. Councillor Probel Irenoy.
Present.
Councillor Dahlia M. De Leon.
Present.
Councillor Alfred Felix I. Castro.
Present.
Ex-official members. Di ganang magabarangga President Raúl B. Bakay.
Present.
And panunson na pidi rasyon ang sagunang kabataan President Loverly Bernabe.
Present.
Thirteen members of this August body responded to the call, sir.
Thirteen members respond to the call and now certify the presence of quorum, remain our trans official business. So complete attendance po tayo today. Kap Bakay, bagay mo yang salamin mo ah, Kap Raúl. Bagay mo 'yan ah, di ba? Ah, ano po, next item po, Madam Secretary, under approval of the agenda.
Approval of agenda po.
And an assigned business, Madam Sir.
We have one unassigned business, sir. Under proposed Resolution Number 2021-076, Resolution authorizing City Mayor Art Brian C. Celeste to enter into a memorandum of partnership agreement in behalf of the City Government of the City of Alaminos Pangasinan with the Department of Environment and Natural Resources Regional Field Office One for the implementation of the public land titling program in the city.
Any other unassigned business from the body? Meron po ba tayong isong idagdag? Wala na po, ah, any motion, Councillor Alfred Felix Castro, Chairman of the Laws and Rules?
I move the order for the transition as well as the unassigned business with the body.
We moved by Councillor Castro, any second? Seconded by Councillor Bernabe, Councillor Radock, Councillor Apol Bakay, Councillor Probel Irenoy, Councillor Michelle S. Segundera for the approval of the said agenda. Any amendments? Hearing none, the said agenda is approved. Next item. Madam Sec.
Adoption of the journal and minutes of the sanggunyang panunsod regular session held on May 12, 2021.
Any motion, Councillor Segundera, sir, thank you nice.
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of the journal and minutes of the SP regular session held on May 12, 2021.
It's been moved by Councillor Segundera, any second? Seconded by Councillor Dizon Sison, Councillor Apol Bakay, and Di ganang mga barangga President Raúl Bakay for the adoption of the said journal and minutes. Any objections? Amendments, discussions, hearing none, the said journal and minutes are adopted. Um, next item is our privilege hour. Any privilege speeches po sa ating hong mga kasamahan? May mga nakikita ba tayong immediate na problema, issues? Or gusto i-bring up po na nangyayari po sa ating lungsod? Any policies po na gustong ipresinta sa ngayon? Okay, wala po. Okay, ah, we proceed, Madam Secretary, under proposed resolutions.
Under proposed resolutions, we have proposed Resolution Number 2021-075, Resolution approving the additional partial list of specific projects funded out of the 20% development fund amounting to 1,777,976 pesos and 51 centavos of the City of Alaminos for calendar year 2021.
So I believe we have a guest, so.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Councillor Cyril Radock moves for the suspension of the rules, seconded by Councillor Probel Irenoy. The rules are suspended, uh. Madam Secretary, can you acknowledge our guest for today?
Our, our guest for this item is our City Engineer, Engineer Ruel N. Kamba.
Okay, uh, to our Secretariat, can you flash the partial list? Engineer Ruel, magandang hapon po, salamat po sa pagadalo po ulit sa ating hong Zoom session. Na-miss po namin 'yung boses ni niyo eh, kaya gusto namin marunig ulit ang inyong ah grapong boses. Ah, meron po tayong partial list dito, ah, siguro po pwede po kami ibrief, lalong-lalo na po 'yung number three.
Ah, good afternoon po sa ating lahat. Ah, ito na naman po 'yung ah, partial list funded by 20% development fund. Ah, specifically 'yung number three, labor and material for the construction of primary and open secondary line extension and distribution transformer at barangay sa Pangan. Ong project na ito po ay may, may tatlong concrete pool na 30 feet at saka 35 feet na concrete pool na 19 na piraso. Siyam po 'yung isa, 'yung 30 feet. Ito po 'yung may ah, primary line na kokonik tapo sa transformer. Ito po 'yung nakakahalaga ng 1.3 million po.
Okay.
Another one is the number two is the labor and material for the construction of bislo protektion ah, rail guard and concrete slab at narastre barangay, is ano si, ito po operation order lang po ito. Kasi po ba nung biniripin namin kailangan po 'yung downstream niya ay magkakaroon din ng bislo protektion para hindi masira pag mag-o-overflow 'yung tubig. Meron ding po protektion. Sa number one po, 'yung proposed installation of solar street light at si Chubukeg ah, 23 units po na solar street light. 23 units po, ang post niya po is ah, less than 400,000.
Okay, 23?
Yes po.
Okay, any questions from the body? Yes, Mister Chair. Yes, Councillor Irenoy.
Engineer, san po ito, tanggagamitin itong ano, itong ah, mga transformer at ah, barangay sa Pangan? Ito po, construction of primary and open secondary line? Itong san po gagamitin itong primary and open secondary line, engineer? Ito sa transformer?
Sandali lang, tapa lagin si, 'yung electrical engineer, di ko lihat ito eh. Ang litra po si Wilson, arusari po.
Good afternoon po, sir, ma'am.
Good afternoon, sir. Sir, ah, meron po katanungan regarding po dun sa primary and open secondary line extension and distribution transformer at barangay sa Pangan. Pwede ni po bang bigyan ng detalye kung san po gagamitin daw po ito?
Ah, dun po sa may, alam niyo po 'yung diversion po ngayon nung ano, iba ginagawa po 'yung basada sa Pangan. Pero po 'yung from dun sa kapitan ng pokal-pokal na daan.
Opo.
Talabas po dun sa papunta sa kapitan ng sa Pangan.
Opo.
Lineya, dun po 'yun ilalagay po 'yung mga linya ng kuryente po. Ah, dun po itatayo 'yung post eh, tapos kasi wala pa pong linya dun, sir. Naputol po 'yun. O 'yung mga bahay dun, ah, 'yung iba wala pa po sila kuryente. Tapos 'yung iba naman po napakahaba ng mga dukes wire nila. Medyo unsafe na rin po 'yung dukes wire. Magkita niyo nakatukod lang po sa tawayan.
Okay. Councillor Irenoy, did the.
Engineer.
Go ahead.
Wala na, wala na.
Hindi ba, hindi ba budget po ng panel po 'yan?
Um, kung ipapa-subject po natin sa panel ko po, ah, wala po silang budget. Usually po 'yan yearly gumagawa rin sila ng budget, sir. So maghahantay tayo, usually. Inihingi po 'yan sa AOE, kung meron, software, wala pa po hanggang ngayon. So maghahantay tayo, sir. Baka kung kailan po mababudget lang, di natin nasub.
Any other questions from the body? Engineer, iclarify ko lang, so ang maproprovide na ito ng lean ng kuryente ay anong mga area? 'Yung parang bagong pokal-pokal road na 'yun?
Opo, opo, 'yun po 'yun.
'Yun lang po, pero kasi di ba maraming mga kabahayan din sa Sabangan or pandan na walang wala ring kuryente? Ah, meron bang ma-affect dito? O wala po?
Um, wala po, kasi 'yung kung san po lang 'yung dumad niyang linya, sila lang po 'yung mga recipient po.
Ah, 'yung, 'yung kalye lang po na iyon?
Ah, 'yung kalye na po na 'yun.
Ah, okay, okay. So, any other questions po from ah, the body? Kasi naalala ko dun sa barangay pandan, maraming mga inner na sitios na hirap rin po sa kuryente.
Pwede din po silang gumawa, sir, ng ano, ng request po.
Ito, ito, ito ni.
Ni kapitana, ang Sabangan po.
Ah, okay, okay. But pero pang kinabang is 'yung pokal-pokal, 'yung boundary?
Hindi po, hindi po, ah, Sabangan po.
Ah, Sabangan, Sabangan side?
Um, opo, Sabangan side.
So tama, pagka may mga areas na wala pang kuryente, baka pwede rin tayong mag-propose ng ganto para maabutan sila ng kuryente.
Yes po.
Any questions pa to our, ah, Sir Wilson? Engineer Wilson, meron pa po? Okay, wala na, sir.
Yes, yes.
Ah, yes, Councillor Alfred.
Ano pipirmahan dito, meron pa?
Ah. Saang area 'yung makikinabang dun sa ikiilalagay nilang transformer?
Ah, Sabangan area po.
Ah, particularly 'yung papunta kila kapitana?
Yes po, dun po 'yung tapping point, dun sa linya na galing kay kapitana po.
No, kasi madalas ang brownout daw nila dyan sa Sabangan eh.
Ano na po 'yun?
Mas marami bang households doon kaysa dito sa going to pandan, 'yung pandan Sabangan Road?
Um, pandan po sa Sabangan Road. Alam po, meron na pong linya dun, sir. Ang wala, ito 'yung diversion road na to na.
Pokal-pokal.
Pokal-pokal po sa Pangan, sir. 'Yun po 'yung naputol na linya. Hanggang doon na sa pokal-pokal 'yung may linya, kasi 'yung papunta sa Sabangan, wala na po.
Sir, may nyo say naputol, meron dati nasira o talagang naputol?
Ah, hindi po, ah, I mean, 'yung hanggang pokal-pokal lang po 'yung linya.
Ah, okay, okay. Sige po, ah, with that, wala na pong katanungan kay Engineer Wilson, sir, salamat po.
Salamat.
Okay, pabigay na lang po kay Engineer Ruel.
Opo.
Any questions pa po sa ating hong, ah, City Engineer? Since nandito rin po ang ating, matiponong City Engineer. Ako po may suggestion po ako, Engineer Ruel, dyan po ba? Ah, nakailang daan rin po kami doon po sa kalye po na 'yun, 'yung pokal-pokal papuntang pandan dahil nga po sa construction sa Sabangan. Ah, meron pong mga suggestion po dati, gusto lang po naming ma-ilapit rin po sa inyo. Unang-una po is 'yung 'yung sa contractor po, minsan po pag ginagawa po 'yung mga kalye at nagkakasalubung huhin dalawang truck ayah, hindi po makadaan 'yung ibang mga sasakyan dahil nagkakabattle next sila dahil hindi nga kakasya. Baka po pwede pong mai-coordinate natin sa constructor na maglagay po sana sila ng tao na mag tawag dun, magta-trapic kung sino po 'yung mauunang dadaan dun po sa area na iyon.
Yes po, noted po 'yan.
Kasi nasubukan ko na rin dumaaan dun, tapos talagang nahirapan rin dumaaan dahil ah, parang makitin 'yung kalye. Pangalawa po, ah, nakita ko rin po nung papunta po akong area po na iyon, ah, parang ang dami na palang bahay na tinatayo doon, no? Sa pokal-pokal area, so 'yung ibaho, ah, medyo malapit na rin ho sa kalye. So maisuggest ko lang po, habang maaga, habang wala pa kong mga bahay, baka mas magandang malinyahan na natin. Saan ba talaga 'yung eastment part at saka 'yung mga lugar na lalagay ng shoulder, lalagay ng barangay road. Malinyahan na po natin para hindi na po silang makapagtayo dun sa tabing katabi ng kalye, kasi pag magtayo na po sila ulit ng konkretong bahay doon, baka mamaya hindi na ulit natin ma-iusog. So suggestion lang po 'yun para ma, ano bang tawag dun, engineer, 'yung parang.
Setback requirements po.
Setback, setback, o tama, tama, 'yung setback requirements. Since marami na rin hong dumadaan doon, tsaka marami na rin, dumadami na po ang mga bahay. Ah, baka pwede pong ma-komeoras po ay ah, mailinnyate na po natin 'yung para sa setback. Yun na po ang suggestions, any suggestions pa po sa ating hong City Engineers?
Meron po ako, bye.
Ah, mauna po si Councillor Dahlia De Leon, tapos si Councillor Alfred. Yes, Councillor Dahlia.
Ah, engineer?
Yes, sir.
Maraming tansasabi, doon po sa Situ Malimpok, buluan ba 'yun? Oo, ah, palagi pong wala, ano, nawalan po ng power supply po doon, halos 'yung mga electric fan po niya ay hindi na ikot, baka po pwedeng, meron naman po palang ah distribution ng transformer, baka pwede po namin isama 'yung Situ Malimpok sa buluan pandan po.
Sige, sige, gagawat pa para ano, ah, patris po 'yan.
Opo, madalas po kasi, ah, engineer, na wala pong kuwan supply.
Yes po.
Siguro ang maganda, ang gawa natin dyan ng Councillor Dahlia, gawa tayo ng, sabi natin kay kay, sa mga residente, okay, kay kapitan na magbigay rin po ng request, no, para at least meron rin pong panghahawakan na request 'yung ating engineering department.
Ah, noted po, bye.
Ipacheck natin, tapos kung kulang, pwede tayong propose ng ganito rin, di ba? Kasi marami ding bahay doon eh.
O, marami po.
And then Councillor Alfred, Felix Castro.
Ah, yes, engineer?
Ah, yes po.
Kailan pa nila bubuksan 'yung kuwan, 'yung sa Sabangan Road, kasi nung isana naman ng konkring dito sa magkasabay na.
Ah, 'yung regarding po sa ano, sa Sabangan Road, nakasuring period pa po 'yung ah, natapos na po. Baka sa 23, ah, pwede ng dalan 'yun.
Usually, 'yung sa Sabangan po, ano eh, light vehicles po pwede ng dumaan, kasi nung Sunday, dumaan na po kami doon eh. Ang light lang, may open na po.
Maganda, maganda, maganda 'yung daan?
Opo, maganda po.
Ano 'yan, Councillor Alfred? Councillor Alfred, ano po 'yun, pwede pa ulit?
Oh, kasi masyadong mahaba 'yung ah, silimento nila dito sa Sabangan Road, engineer.
Yes po.
Pagbuksan 'yun, masyadong malaki ang taas. 'Yung mga malaking truck na dumadaan, paano na naman iako mo dito 'yun pag nagkabay na ang konkreting dito sa may pokal-pokal road? Parang mag-o-overlapping 'yung trabaho doon. Hindi kaya?
Hindi naman po siguro, kasi one lane, one lane din doon eh. One lane lang po 'yung gagawin muna doon sa ano, sa ah, 'yung pokal-pokal road, 'yun. DPWH, kuwan po 'yun, ah, project po.
Doon sa pokal-pokal road, kasi marami na rin nagkukumpin na mga nagmo-motor siklo dahil ilang siklo ng natumba dahil doon sa 'yung pagta-topping. Pero anyway, ah.
Paki na lang po.
Hopefully, huwag sanang magpunta. Maayos na lang sana nila 'yung open 'yung isang road. Yun lang 'yung concern.
Kailan ang target? May 23 ba, engineer, may 23?
Opo, may 23, pwede na pong ah ask per report ng contractor, kasi natapos nila 'yung touring period niya, kasi is 21 days.
Okay. Malapit na rin pala. O pwede na tayong mag-ano doon, mag-jogging doon pag nag-opening na sila. So, yun na pwede niyo, no, 'yung suggestion ng body is number one, ah, 'yung sa contractor nung pokal-pokal road, kung po pwede, may magga-guide, dalo na po magsalubong 'yung dalawang truck. So number two, 'yung eastment, ah, nung kalye po na 'yun. At number three, sana huwag po magsabay, na gawin po 'yung ah, konkreting non, sa pag hindi pa bukas 'yung Sabangan Road. Anyway, five days naman ah. So siguro five days na tiis-tiis mo na kung meron, di ba? Lapit naman.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councillor Michelle, last question?
Yes, may tatanong kang po sana kay engineer?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, ah, engineer, may maximum weight limit po ba dapat na sinusunod ang mga dump trucks na dumadaan sa mga kalye natin? Kasi lagi pong may nasisirang daan sa bigat nito?
Wala naman po eh.
Wala, oo, wala. Actually, Councillor Michelle, ah, 'yung ating sanggunian gumagawa, nagda-draft po tayo ng ordinance regarding 'yung mga ganyan, mga maximum capacity, lalong-lalo na po sa mga barangay road. Kasi nasisira po 'yung ating mga kalye, lalong-lalo na po 'yung mga bagong gawa. So siguro will work on it muna, kung mas magandang lagyan o gaano karami.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Raúl Bakay, sige po.
Ah, vice, suggestion lang din, ah, bilang kaibigan natin si Engineer Ruel, oh. Eh, 'yung opisina niya, vice, baka ah, bineko na, eh, bendishunan mo, ta, naubos na kayo doon.
Ganun ba, ganun ba, naubos? Eh, dapat na magko-need tayo. Yung nga, yun nga.
Ah, advice eh, ere, kuwan mo, para kuwan lagyan mo ng maraming pintuan.
Laman naman para may takas, di ba, oh? Lapos, ah, engineer, mapagkit rin namin sa'yo, napag-usapan namin last week 'yung ano, 'yung mga nasasagasaan 'yung sa Water District po kasi, na-bring up po nila na minsan daw pag nagbabako 'yung DPWH natatamaan 'yung mga linya ng tubig. So siguro matulungan niyo rin po 'yung LGO na kung paano ba natin ma ma-request sa DPWH na mag-coordinate naman sila muna, kasi ah, yun nga po, parang pag may tinamaan, eh, tuloy-tuloy po 'yung tagas ng tubig, marami pong na-peperis 'yung mga kababahayin po natin.
Yes po. Actually, vice, ah, 'yung converts noon bago po sila bibigyan ng permit sa excavation, nakikipag-coordinate muna sila sa Water District.
Ah, okay, maganda, pagka ganun, dapat lahat ganun, kasi kung di, ano. Councillor Cyril Radock, for last question, ah?
Yeah, ah, engineer, kunstain ko lang 'yung implementation ng ating ordinance sa tungkol sa backfilling, kasi dami kong nakikitang nagtatabor, nag, almost everywhere yata, may nag-moving eh. Anong nangyari doon? Mukhang hindi naman sila kumukuha ng development permits, sanggunian.
Ang nagpapatupad po is 'yung zoning officer po natin, ah, your honor. Pero nakanoted lang ako doon, si Basila.
Ha?
'Yung zoning officer natin.
Hindi, kung po pwede, engineer, as per ordinance sa kasi, kung hindi po sila nag secure nung development permit na 'yun at saka ng clearance sa zoning, pwede po nating ipatigil. Kasi ang problema po natin is pag maharangan po 'yung mga daanan ng tubig eh, magkakaproblema po tayo. So siguro, the sanggunian, ah, the Secretariat, our oversight, or one of our sections can also make a list, 'yung mga tingin natin na wala pang development permit, and then we'll submit it to the engineering office for action. Di ba? Para at least tulungan na natin sila kung ano 'yung mga nakikita nating mga lugar na nagtatambak. Tapos ah, wala namang problema, mabilis na naman makakuha, di ba, engineer, nung
Man mabilis ka.
Experience ng zoning, tsaka 'yung sanggunyang sanggunyang pang lungsod. So siguro, that's what we can do na lang, no? Pa-check malang engineer din ah, kasi
Yes po, yes po.
Baka mamaya, pagdating ng tag-ulan, bahayin tayo, lumubog 'yung ibang mga lugar natin.
Sige po.
Please take no closer to our secretariat, please suggest. Yes po, go ahead po.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Yes po.
Meron pa na kung kuwan na parang gumit dyan. Kanina, I was invited as a resource speaker dun sa orientation or training ng mga poso.
Okay.
Kung kuwan pala, tinignan ko po, 'yung poso pala, isa sa mga function sila, may special group sila to check on violations of city ordinances, including permits. Meron na, tinignan ko 'yung sa ordinance, inacting 'yung poso, kuwan eh.
Okay.
Kinuwan ko sila, kung dapat meron silang authority na magsita doon sa mga nagbabayad ng, tulad nung kuwan sinabi ko, 'yung walang permit, development permit galing sa sanggunian.
Yes.
Pwede pala poso.
Yes.
Nandun sa character nila eh.
Yes, yes, yes.
Tama, okay. There is overlapping function dyan, engineering.
I guess siguro, the sanggunian, as the oversight, ah, si engineering 'yung office side and permits side, pero the poso, since sila'y nasa ground can work with the engineering para ipatigil, 'yung pagtatambak or stop. Kasi technically illegal 'yung ginagawa nila, di ba? Siguro we can coordinate with the poso also, ah, Councillor Radock, para at least alam nila na ganun, napo pwede nilang gawin 'yun. Siguro tayo rin as councilors pwede natin silang i-train, parang 'yung ginawa po ni niyo, para at least ma-update sila sa mga bawal, ano 'yung mga pwede. Maruyan ang i-implement nila. Any other? Okay, kung wala na, yun na po, medyo marami na po 'yun, engineer, so pupunta na po si Kapitana Bakay dyan at bibendishunan 'yung ano mga kailangan, bendishunan. Sige, ah, maraming mukhang salamat, Engineer Ruel, ah.
Thank you, thank you.
Patulong na lang po, ah, patulong na lang po, marami sila.
Yes po, sir. Thank you, thank.
So we will now, ah, Madam Luz, do we have any guest pa? Parang may resource speaker pa na nandito.
Wala na, sir.
Wala na? Okay, so we will now lift the suspension of the rules. So, what is the pleasure of the body, Councillor Radock? Councillor Radock, what is the pleasure regarding the said resolution?
I move, Mr. Chair, that proposed resolution be limited to the business of the day for deliberation later and approval.
It's been moved by Councillor Cyril Radock, seconded by Councillor Dizon Sison, Councillor Segundera to include the said Councillor Rabago to include the said resolution in the business of the day for deliberation. Any objection? Hearing none, the said resolution is included in the business of the day. Next item, Madam Secretary. Can't hear you.
Motion authorizing City Mayor Art Brian C. Celeste to enter into a memorandum of partnership agreement with the Department of Environment and Natural Resources for the implementation of the public land titling program in.
Okay, ah, shall we schedule for committee hearing, Councillor Jose Rito Fontelera, maybe? Or joint, joint committee with the Councillor Segundera, since environment and land use po ito? Councillor Jojo, Councillor Michelle, any date that we wanna set for committee hearing?
Ah, yes, Mr. Chair, um, three, next week. Um, 4/6?
Go, Jojo.
Tuesday, 3:30, wala na lang, kailan po?
Sir? Ah, nine? May 17?
What time po?
Ah, 17, diba? Um, may, may, Mr. Chair, February, ah, May 34?
May 24, okay? Ano oras po?
Sir, may public hearing pa lang nun, sir.
Kailan 'yung ano, Madam Luz, medyo maluwag natin ah, schedule, meron ka ba dyan? Para isubay na natin ng ano.
31?
So, let's just set a tentative schedule, maybe, huh?
Madam Luz.
Councillor Jojo, can you just set a tentative date, maybe?
Ah. May 28, Mr. Chair?
May 28, so, ah, may 28?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councillor Jose Rito Fontel, are you okay with that, Councillor Segundera?
Ah, yes, Mr. Chair, I'm okay with it, ah, May 28.
Okay, so Councillor Jose Rito Fontelera, yes, about earlier, kung kaya.
May 28, we will put it to our, ah, beauty pool, field.
Oh, the.
A blessing, supposed to be blessing pala, sir.
Kailan ba 'yung ISO, kailan 'yung ISO natin?
26 po.
26?
You put it in July. Ayun.
What, sige, so Councillor Jose Rito Fadeleras, schedule sa committee regarding the said resolution on May 28. What, sige, so Counselor Joselito Funteleras, schedule sa committee ring regarding the said resolution on May twenty-eight. Uh, what time po? Ten?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock in the morning at our Sangguneang Panglongsoon session hall. Please invite the following resource speaker, uh, and the 'yung sa draft, 'yung draft, draft MOA po, very important po ito, hopefully uh Mam Luz, please furnish the committee members, including our lawyer, including Attorney Radoc and Attorney Alfred uh by maybe early next week, para ma-review po 'yung mga, 'yung MOA, 'yung memorandum, ah 'yung tama, 'yung agreement, kasi this is a very, uh, sensitive na matter. So, so ordered, um, May twenty-eight, ten o'clock in the morning. Next item, Madam Sec.
Let's proceed with the committee, committee reports. The first item is joint committee report from the hearing held on May seven regarding the proposed ordinance reclassifying a portion of la- of a parcel of land declared under tax declaration number twenty eighteen, the thirty-five, the zero zero eight zero four containing an area of four thousand six hundred forty-eight square meters from agricultural use to commercial use registered under the name of Sheila V. Alfonso Merid to Juwel P. Mariano.
Counselor Joselito Funtelera.
And Mister Chair, I move that the, the, the recommendation portion will be read only because you have already the, read in copy of the reports.
Alright, uh, any objection to that? Hearing on the said, move that we read the recommendation part, to the Secretariat, please flush the committee report. Counselor Jojo, shall, shall you read the, uh, can you read the?
Uh, Mister Chair. What is it all?
Sa, sa recommendation lang po.
Recommendation, Mister Chair. With the above findings, the committee hereby moves for the adoption of the committee report and that the subject matter would be scheduled for the public hearing on May twenty-four to the twenty-one at eleven o'clock in the morning in the to be held in Barangay Tanay Tay Auditorium, Mister Chair.
Okay, it has been moved by Counselor Joselito Funtelera for the adoption of this committee report and the said matter be include, be in the said matter be scheduled for public hearing on May twenty-four, eleven AM, in the Barangay Tanay Tay Auditorium. Any objection? Hearing on the said, committee report is hereby adopted and the public hearing is set on May twenty-four, eleven o'clock in the morning. Um, to the Secretariat, please make sure that all the, the proponent is invited and all the requirements available are already there with us. Okay, next item, Mam Sec.
Report from the public hearing held on May ten regarding the ordinance reclassifying portion of a parcel of land owned by Raile Kids Corporation represented by Medagros Perrier, co-board under tax uh transfer certificate of title number zero two seven, thus two zero, two zero 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 three one four and tax declaration number twenty eighteen, thus thirty-three thus zero two four two zero containing an area of two thousand five hundred square meters situated at barangasan Besente de City from agricultural use to commercial use.
Counselor Alfred, can you read the recommendation area, the recommendation part, please?
Yes, Mister Chair, uh. You, the findings of the committee moves for the adoption of the comment report and that the subject matter be calendared for second reading on the next. Asma, hindi mo basa?
Ako na, hindi ko rin basa, scroll, scroll up pa, Secretariat, please. Scroll down pala, sorry. Sa recommendation po.
On the next scheduled session.
Ah, okay, um, ako, hindi ko rin basa eh. Uh, okay, so Counselors Alfred, Flex, the custom moves for the adoption of this committee report. The said, make sure be calendared for second reading in our next regular session. Any objection? Hearing on the said committee report is hereby adopted and the said measure be calendared for second reading in our next regular session. Next item, Madam Secretariat.
I proceed to the new, to the business of the day.
Parang may isa pa, parang may isa pa ata, wait lang.
Wala na, sir.
How about 'yung itong admin case?
Sir, hindi po, hindi po kinu- committee report ang admin case, that is confidential in nature.
Ah, okay, okay, okay. Bakit nandito? Nandito kasi sa agenda, sa advanced copy ko.
Yes, sir, kasi kaya ko pinatanggal, sir, kasi that's confidential in nature, hindi dapat, hindi nalabas.
Sige.
So now we proceed to the under new business, we have the second reading of the proposed ordinance providing for the creation of Bantay African-
Bantay African swine fever at the barangay providing funds thereof and other purposes. Mam Secretaries is already ready for, uh, third and final reading, or do we have changes pa?
Provide po for the provision ng tech-
Chapi po, hi Mam? Mam, chopi po kayo? Chopi, chopi. Di na tayo ng bagong headset.
And these are 'yung internet connection.
Ah, ganun ba? Sige po, proceed po.
Sir, 'yung ano, ah, wala po kasing provision for technical working group, 'yung ating draft ngayon, so and, uh, kailangan po natin lagyan ng technical working group for the implementation, proper implementation of the ordinance, so we are requesting for another-
differ na lang natin.
Second reading.
Counselor Ranoy, can we defer to our next regular session? Counselor Ranoy? Okay lang po, nahaano, unmute. Counselor Ranoy, nakamute po kayo. Counselor Ranoy? Nakamute siya eh. Yan.
Yes, sir, uh, preside po, sir.
Okay, so-
Hindi pa pwede nating eh, turn down pageal reading na, kasi kailangan na nilang mag-trial dun sa iisip, Mister Kirman. Kasi wala namang multa, wala namang nakalaga na multa 'yung ano eh. Unification lang 'yan pagka kuwan.
Pwede naman, um, Mam Luz, actually, just do the change now, just, uh, under second reading today uh just include the technical working group, like what, like we usually do, City Mayor and then uh Vice Chairman and then, ah, sa kailangan may dalawang minimum of two SP members thus included in the technical working group para may kasamang Sanggunean member and lahat po ng mga assigned, mga agencies na kasama and then sa latter por- portion, just put na the City Mayor can add to his discretion that is related to ASF. May pondo ba to, Counselor Ranoy? Nagpo- pondo ba to, na kasama? Nagbibigay ng city sa kanila, wala?
Oo, Mister, uh, Kirman. Galit po sa DE, 'yung ah kuwan, 'yung sa agriculture, 'yung kuwan. Ipapamigay nilang baboy, tapos kuwan, itra-trial. Hindi tayo makakagalaw kung kuwan.
Wala ito, wala ito.
Kung, wala 'yung ordinance sa Mister Kirman.
Okay, so Mam Luz, may funding requirement ba to? Kung walang funding, pwede natin i-approved today?
Sir, I'm not very sure sa ano, i-double check.
Wala namang penalty, diba?
Wala pong penalty, sir.
Walang penalty po.
Let's calendar this for third and final reading in today's regular session para, uh, ma-approve na natin ito.
This session, sir, i- 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 approve niyo na kayo, sir?
Uh, under second reading now, uh, include the technical working group that I just mentioned and then Counselor Ranoy moves to schedule it for third and final reading in today's regular session as well. Okay, any second to that? Seconded by Counselor Apple Bakay, Counselor Segundera, Counselor Oscar Bowling, Counselor Atefex De Castro, Counselor Bernabe, Counselor De Leon, any objection? Hearing on the said, um, ordinance is calendared for third and final reading in today's regular session. So, next item.
Second reading of the, uh, ordinance reclassifying portions of two parcels of land situated at barangay poblasion de City with an aggregate area of seven thousand five hundred eight square meters from agricultural use to commercial use.
Um. Counselor Funtelera, what is your pleasure? Counselor De Castro? Anyone, who, uh, who is the proponent of this, Mam Sec?
Unitop, sir.
Unitop, who is the proponent of that? Is that, uh, Counselor, uh, Alfred?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Alfred, are you there? So we proceed first to item, next item, if, I think he's having technical difficulty. Item number three and four.
Uh, next item is the up- updating of the figury ordinance.
Ito Mam, okay na ba to?
Yes, sir.
So we can already schedule for third and final reading in our next session?
Yes po.
Counselor Ranoy, shall we schedule the figury ordinance for third and final reading in our next regular session?
Yes, Mister Kirman.
Okay, uh, it's been moved by Counselor Robel Ranoy, Chairman of Agriculture, any second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor De Leon, Counselor, uh, Rabago to, uh, calendar the said figury ordinance for third and final reading in our next regular session, so ordered. Uh, any, next item?
A second reading of the codification ordinance.
So, kulang, mulan ba dyan? Parang dami na disconnect na Counselor. May signal, signal ba dyan? Uh, anyway, regarding this codification ordinance, uh, the Secretariat requests for another uh two weeks to, to prepare the final draft. Our target for this is to include all the ordinances that are passed up to June thirty, twenty, twenty-one. So the said codification ordinance is deferred in our next regular session two weeks from now, so ordered. So, is Counselor Alfred back? Counselor Jojo? Uh, to our Secretariat, please, uh, visit the office of Counselor Alfred or Counselor Jojo, since they're the proponent of this ordinance. Uh, Mam Luz, we proceed to-
Next item.
Do we still have courtroom? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Yes, we still have courtroom. Uh, we have nine members and then the other four members are having internet, uh, problems, connectivity problems. Proceed, we proceed, next, we proceed.
Next item is the resolution approving the additional partial list of specific projects funded out of the twenty percent development fund amounting to one million seven hundred seventy-seven thousand nine hundred seventy-six pesos and fifty-one centavos of the city of Alaminos for calendar year twenty twenty-one.
Any motion? Any motion, Counselor Dizon Cison, maybe? Any motion regarding the said, uh, resolution, the partial list?
Uh, yes. Mister Chair. Uh, ah, wala si Counselor Badon, so if there are no other comments regarding the said, uh, resolution, I move for it.
Wait, it has been moved by Counselor Dizon Cison, by Counselor Apple Bakay, Counselor Ranoy, Counselor Michelle, Cison Segundera, Counselor Apple Bakay for the adoption of the said resolution. Any objection? Hearing on the said, the solution is hereby adopted. Next item.
Third and final reading of the ordinance amending section three of Article One, section three of Article eleven, and section four of Article twenty-five of ordinance number two thousand five, thus twenty-two, otherwise known as the comprehensive transportation and traffic ordinance of the city of Alaminos.
Mam Luz, can we, is this the, 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 the title, or can we change the title to like a more general title para madaling basahin?
Sir, that's the third and final reading na ito eh.
Hindi, hindi, ito, ito lalaba sa title, an ordinance amending. Okay, sige. Uh, wait, let us wait for Counselor Cirilo Radoc. Yes, Counselor Raúl Bakay?
Uh, Mister Chair, uh, I move the, uh, approval of this ordinance.
Okay, uh, it has been moved by, uh, Counselor, uh, LBP Raúl Bakay, duly seconded by Counselor Dizon Cison, Counselor Apple Bakay, and Counselor, uh, Verna San Diego Rabago for the enactment of the said, uh, ordinance. Any objection? Any amendments, any discussions? Mam Luz, siguro, uh, ano ba, hearing on the said ordinance is hereby enacted. Congratulations, Counselor, uh, LBP Kap Bakay, finally na, tapos na natin ito. Siguro next time na lang, pag may mahabang title, let's just make, let's just, uh, use, uh, or propose 'yung parang uh short title niya, parang di masyado mahaba. Anyways, um, next item, Madam Secretariat.
Next item is the third and final reading of the ordinance providing for the creation of Bantay African swine fever sa barangay, providing funds thereof and for other purposes.
Okay, mali, mali naman na ba dyan, kung sa nakalagay, saan kukunin 'yung pondo? DA naman, diba? Mam Luz?
Yes, sir, sabi ng Counselor Ranoy.
Okay, Counselor Ranoy, what is your pleasure? 'Yung pondo mong nagrereklase kay Counselor Ranoy, kaya no problem?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Ranoy, uh, what is your pleasure regarding this?
Uh, I move for the, for, uh, the approval of the said matter, Mister Kirman.
So it has been moved by Counselor Ranoy for the enactment of the said ordinance providing the creation of the Banday African swine fever ASF sa barangay providing funds thereof and for other purposes. Uh, any second to that? Seconded by Counselor Apple Bakay, Counselor De Leon, Counselor Apple Bakay, any objection? Hearing on the said, ordinance is hereby enacted. Walang penalty clause yan ha?
Wala, sir.
Okay.
Wala naman dito.
Next item.
Uh, announcement reminders po kung meron.
Uh, any announcements? Wala tayo, one hour lang tayo today. Any announcements po? Wala po, uh. Again, 'yung mga senior citizens na gusto po magbabakuna, pakipasa lang po sa ating uh office para po ma-endorse po natin sa health center para mapabakunahan po sila. And then susunod na po 'yung adults with comorbidities. So I think na bakunahan na po 'yung iba ng ating mga magulang at, uh, iba po nating mga kaibigan na in-endorse po ng ating Sanggunean. Any announcements po? Uh, kakatapos lang po ng ating internal audit ng ISO. Kailan ba yun? Kahapon ba yun?
Yes.
Yesterday, and, uh, I'm proud to say that, uh, the Legislative Department headed by Mam Luz Valle, uh, did a great job in, uh, in our audit, and our external audit will be on May twenty-six. So, surveillance po yun, so pupunta po ulit ng mga offices natin 'yung mga magche-check sa ISO kung maayos po 'yung ating opisina, sinusubay mga proseso, at kung alam ba natin 'yung mission vision ng mga uh, nung ating LGU. So, sabi ata, Mam Luz, merong dalawang Counselor na pupuntahan, diba? So kailangan ma-memorize nila 'yung quality policy natin. So yun lang po, um, siguro to our Secretariat, please provide na lang.
I- i-recommenda ko Mister Chair, si Counselor Fontelera na lang puntan na lang.
Sa Palamis, sa Palami, oh. Oh, nag-volunteer, also there is a volunteer by Counselor Funtelera, na siya po ang bibisit tayo, he will host the, the consultants, uh, for our ISO. So other than that, uh, wala pa po tayong date para mag-lumipat sa new building natin. Though pumunta ako last week, uh, tapos na po, at, uh, gumagano na lahat ng aircon, nakita ko na rin 'yung mga kwarto ninyo. So just coordinate na lang with Mam Luz kung paano po 'yung sa mga gamit ninyo and 'yung sa rooming po ng mga councilors. I think nakausap na nga rin 'yung mga secretaries unin nyo. So, any other announcements po?
Sir, may isa pa tayong ginatakol.
Ano pa?
'Yung reclass, sir, na, uh, poblasion.
Sige. Counselor Radoc, regarding the reclassification of this under second reading uh, reclassification of seven thousand five hundred eight square meters from agricultural to commercial sa barangay poblasion, uh, did you were able to talk to Counselor Alfred kung anong magiging action natin dito? Counselor Radoc?
But, ah, hindi pa kami nag-usap Mister Chair, pero to be sure, ah, we defer that for third, ah, second and, ah, final reading siguro, diretso na sa next regular.
Okay, sige, sige, ah.
Requirements.
Wala pa bang requirements? Baka kulang panahon ng requirements, so, so.
May kulang requirements, kaya.
Ah, so siguro, ah, since it's already under second reading, we calendar it for second and, ah, final read, another second reading and possibly third and final reading in our next regular session pending the, the requirements and the final draft of the said ordinance. It was, ah, motion by Council Redoc, any second, seconded by Council Raoul Bakay, Council Segundera, for the calendaring of another second reading in our next regular session and possible third reading in our next regular session. Any objection? Hearing na, the said ordinance is calendered for second and third reading in our next regular session. Any other announcements pa po? Ah, wala na? Okay, ah, Councilor Bernabe?
Mister Presiding Officer, if there are no more items to discuss, I move for the adjournment of our session for today.
Okay, it has been moved by Councilor Bernabe, seconded by Council Dizon Cison and Council Ranoy for the adjournment of today's regular session. And I'll call this Sanggonian Pangungsod Regular Session for the month of May adjourned. Maraming pong salamat.
Thank you, bye.
Saan sila? Oh, picture.
Thank you, bye.
Picture daw, sabi ni Council Carol.
Carol, meron na bang PBB?
Ah?
Meron lang?
Wala, wala pa, wala pang PBB, kasi.
Pinu ano?
Unus pa, di ba? One.